Watching us at home or wherever you are. And I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is roll call.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Are there any changes or modifications?
Oh.
I heard something, but.
Mayor, this is Jackie Graves, and at some point I need to stay in the record while we're doing the Zoom, so we can, I'll do that after this.
Or we can do it right now.
Okay, I'll just say the piece right now, which is that I would ask that the record reflects that pursuant to Section 610-015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council who are not physically present in council chambers are participating in voting on all matters. Because it exists and the nature of the emergency should, I ask that it be reflected in the minutes. And that emergency be the status of the coronavirus and the fact that we are under orders of the Missouri governor and the county executive staying distant from one another, limiting gatherings to a limited number of people. And generally, the state of emergency that's been declared in the state of Missouri pursuant to all of those, we are all participating in this meeting via Zoom remotely. And as are all of the city council members who are meeting here electronically and not in the council chambers, but because of this emergency, can vote on all matters electronically and virtually here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion, I believe, on the council agenda. Do we have a second also?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? And there's no, there's no changes, right? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number six is the public forum. And do we have any, anyone that would like to join us here?
Raise your hand. Yeah, we have, we have one.
Jeanette.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Jeanette, can we get your full name, please?
Jeanette Pingle.
And can we also get your address?
7381 Hazel Avenue.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeanette.
Okay, so I just, this has been on a lot of people's minds, and there's been a lot of discussion, but I haven't heard any concrete protocol for how to handle the situation with businesses, local businesses, when they do not, when they allow people who do not wear masks to continue shopping in their stores or staying at the gas station or wherever it is. I talked to Mayor Greenberg last week because I don't get out that much, but I do go grocery shopping. And I was at Aldi, and there was a problem where most, I would say ninety, more than ninety percent of the people are wearing masks. There were a few people who were not wearing masks, and it can turn me, so I asked basically the store manager if he would say something. And he basically said he had his hands tied, like he was not allowed to confront anybody. And I asked if it would be okay if I confronted them, and he said yes. So I did, and we got, we got basically nowhere. But that led me to contact the corporate office. In addition to Mayor Greenberg, I also contacted the county executive office. They had put out a press release saying that the mandate was in order. I also saw an update on that today from Sam Page indicating that patrons can report an incident on the St. Louis County Coronavirus website. And after the report is filed, it says that county workers, they are not specific about who those county workers are, but county workers will follow up with businesses to educate them on the mandate, give signage, and if needed, to help them communicate with customers. But this is really pretty vague. I talked to the corporate office of Aldi today and wasn't really able to get much further than what I had told them in my email, which is basically what I just discussed here. They did say that in cities where the, there is a mandate to wear a mask, that they are compliant, and they will put up the signage to wear masks. And then I further asked them, well, what is your protocol if someone in the store takes off their mask or is not, slips in and is not wearing a mask? And she said, I'm not able to answer that question, but I will, I am forwarding your comments to corporate. So this is my question, like, as a team, we, you know, I think that a lot of people are very confused. If you looked at the websites, that's the only public social media I'm on, but there's a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of people coming from all different angles. But their own interpretation of what the, what the protocols are. I don't want anyone getting thrown in jail or getting hurt because of this. But I think that there needs to be an understanding that it's serious business and that, you know, there is a good reason to do it. I also expressed that Trader Joe's, which is not in Maplewood, however, it's a place where I shop, they do wonderfully. They do not let anyone in the store without a mask. They count the number of people who go into the store, so if you're interested in, you know, if you're, I don't want to say paranoid like me, but if you're careful like me, that's my place to shop. But I don't want to lose Aldi or Schnucks in the area, but I do have gone into both of those stores. And clearly, there are just people walking around without masks and no one's saying, I'm, no one's saying anything to them. I asked the security guard at Schnucks, well, you know, do you even confront people? Well, no, we're not. That's not my business. They, yeah. So it's like just turning a blind eye. I mean, it's a mandate, but if you don't have to follow it, well, you know, I would actually prefer that all the people who don't want to wear masks know which stores don't want to be compliant, and no one's going to worry about them. Let everybody go there and have everybody else who wants to wear a mask have the option to go and feel safe where they, where they know they can go.
Yeah, Jeanette, I did talk with Aldi's corporate office, and the, the concerns were the same, that they, they provide the appropriate signage, but they don't necessarily instruct their employees to confront anyone based on some of the videos that you've seen where customers have turned violent and belligerent. And so I, it was nice to, you know, there was about 120 replies on Nextdoor and the one that you referred to with regards to the reporting mechanism with St. Louis County. I don't know how effective that would be, but, and how they're going to follow up on that, but at least I, you know, in terms of it is an enforcement mechanism, whether or not it's going to be effective is, it remains to be seen. I have my concerns about it also.
But that's the missing link. That's the missing link for everyone, not just for us. It's for everyone. And again, I don't want to see people hurt, but I, and this is another personal experience because I ride public transportation every day to go to work. And for a while there, I wasn't riding it because they weren't following through with their mask requirement, and that worried me, even though I was wearing a mask. So I drove to work for about a month. I had talked to, I went up in the ranks of MetroLink, basically, and finally got ahold of somebody who, the assistant to the CEO, had a, had a security problem back, and we had a long discussion. I now ride MetroLink. They are very efficient. They announce on the platform, it is required. And not only is it required to wear a mask, but it must cover up over your nose. It's announced on the train, and there are more security people coming through. I'm not sure what happens if you're not wearing a mask properly. I think they just ask you to get off at the next stop if you're not willing to comply. There's such a handful of people, but now they're, today, actually, there were more people on the train, so it remains to be seen what will happen. But something changed, and it's a good thing. So maybe we need to follow the leads of people who have success and find out what we should do.
You know, the only argument that I made with the Aldi's management is that there, there are posts on social media with regards to which businesses are enforcing and which ones aren't, and that people are subscribing to those posts. And the ones, you know, and telling people not to go to the locations where, you know, people aren't wearing masks, you know. As far as an enforcement mechanism, you know, whether that convinces them that they need to be more adamant about, you know, confronting customers that don't want to do that, remains to be seen also. But I think we got the point. Is there anyone on council that, that has any additional information?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, Jeanette, I would encourage you and anyone else participating in tonight's public forum to email any concerns about businesses not having employees or asking or enforcing customers to wear a mask, to email business-COVID@stlouisco.com. That's S-T-L-O-U-I-S-C-O.com. And that's a good place to send your reports. We just ask that you be specific in those reports. Include the address of where you are, the time you were there, and a description of what you saw. And staff from the Department of Public Health will review it and reach out to that business.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the information. Let's move on to the, the next public forum participant. Does anyone else have their hands raised?
Oh, yeah, we have one other, a couple others.
Okay. You can patch them in, please.
Is it Owen next?
Yeah, I see his hand is up.
You're muted, Anthony.
You're muted, Anthony.
Owen, can you hear us?
No. Owen?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you now.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We're having a difficult connection. Let's move on to the next person and come back to Owen and see if that helps.
I've got Carla DeRousse.
Okay, Carla, can you?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, Carla.
Hi, so I have like two quick comments. The first is about masking also, but it's in regard to actually, like, city employees, Maplewood city employees. I was a little concerned at the number of people, I caught the tail end of the, of the police discretion last week, and I was a little concerned to see the number of people in close proximity without masks inside last week. But then more, more concerning, I think, was that I saw an officer have someone pulled over on Sutton yesterday. And he approached the vehicle and was speaking to the occupant of the vehicle unmasked, standing right next to the vehicle, definitely within six feet or less. So I'm just curious, what is our policy as a city on having our employees masked, especially those that are dealing with the public? Like, you know, different members of the public, this is, you know, exactly how community spread happens. And then my second comment is regarding the Sun 'N Development, the tax abatement issue that's also on tonight's agenda. And, you know, I, I've listened to all of the back and forth on this. I've, there's been several discussions, and I understand what Sun 'N is saying, but, you know, as a citizen who's lived in Maplewood almost a decade, and we've been a homeowner for several years, since just owning our home is several years, we've seen our own, just in the last year, actually, our personal property tax went up so much that we are now paying an extra, an extra mortgage payment each year, so. And my insurance costs stayed the same. It was solely the personal property tax that increased. And so just with that in mind, with the current pandemic in mind, and the increase in taxes on groceries that we just voted through, I mean, we're all experiencing higher costs and increases in costs and having to tighten our belts a little more. And I honestly don't see property taxes going down, like, anytime soon. They're going to continue to increase for regular, just regular people. And we don't get tax abatements, even when we're facing unemployment or a pandemic or, you know, income insecurity. We don't get breaks. We don't get tax abatements. Especially not of, you know, to the tune of like twenty-five percent, which is what the increase that they're, the lift on the cap that they're asking for. And so I just, the existing package is a generous one, I feel like, and there's also nothing saying that they won't come back in several years and ask for an additional lift. So I just don't support lifting that cap more than, you know, more than the existing tax abatement. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you very much. And I'm still interested in the answer on the city's policy on masking employees.
Okay, thanks, Carla. Anthony, do we want to address that now, or?
City's policy is the same as throughout the county. We should have a mask on.
And so should people report our police officers to the county then?
I'll do it. Technically, yes, but I think it makes more sense to go through, Anthony.
Yeah, I agree. So if you do see an instance where someone's not adhering to the guidelines, then let Mr. Traxler know. And he'll address the situation. Do we have Mr. Nolan back on? Is his hand still raised?
Yes, I, we kept him in. I'll go ahead and unmute.
Let's give it a try.
Right now. Owen, can you hear us now?
I can. Can you guys hear me?
Much better.
All right, awesome. So just real quickly, I'd like to, this is Owen Scholter, 7520.
You're, you're not the hockey player, Owen Nolan.
Oh, yeah, totally.
I'm missing it. Okay.
And 7521 Reynolds Avenue. So I'd really like to thank Jeanette for taking action and contacting MetroLink as well as Aldi's corporate. And thank you, Mayor Greenberg, for contacting Aldi's corporate, because it's something I've observed a lot of at QT specifically. And it is hard as a resident to really know what to do, and thank you, Sarah, for the, the information on how to report. It is concerning, I think, hearing Carla's observation, especially a police officer approaching a vehicle unmasked. And I would like more details on, from you, Anthony, on how we will handle this. I think one thing we, that might help is just to be more cognizant of setting an example. So for example, at the public, the police forum, to have our officers masked whenever they are in a public setting, or to be very cognizant of social distancing. I think the more people see that, just the more it kind of reinforces the behavior. And then, I mean, Carla echoed a lot of my statements. The other one on the Sunco, the other comment, the initial comment I had was on the Sun 'N Development. And I, I too, if, if in fact, I haven't been as involved with the issue, but if in fact, Sunco LLC is asking for us to raise the cap in light of us raising property taxes, if that is the main thrust of it, me, I worry that they would, could come back and, and ask for this increase. You know, again, our property taxes will increase, as I think personally, as with a child in the, our amazing school district. You know, a lot of that is for the health of our school. But I, I am a little concerned, kind of what tone this sends, what, what tone it, it sent the grant, Sunco, this, this abatement in light of some residents struggling, many residents struggling, and, and also kind of what precedent it sets for, for future developers. You know, I mean, because the amount of money is, I mean, twelve million dollars versus fifteen million dollars. In the grand scheme of things, you know, I'm not a developer. I don't know what that looks like. But to, to grant an extension based on a developer's, based on this, I just don't know what would prevent another developer from asking for the same thing when their project, you know, when they want to go from fifteen million to twenty million. So I think there's just a precedent setting issue there that the council should, should, should think about, and I'm sure has thought about at great length, too. So that's it. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has their hand raised?
No, sir.
I don't see any, but just to remind everyone that's watching.
I apologize. Mayor, Mayor Greenberg, Mary Coon's hand went up.
Okay, yes, very good. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can hear you, too.
Can we get your address for the record, please?
Seventy-four eighteen Maple.
Thank you.
All I wanted to say is I'm extremely new, so I'm just learning. But if I were a city council member, I would figure I would only give a giant tax abatement to people who had affordable housing. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Looking at the list, it appears that that's the last person to raise their hand. I was about to mention that people will have a second opportunity after they listen to what we're talking about to, to participate in a second public forum. So with that, let's move on to item number seven, which are announcements. Are there any announcements?
Well, I do have some. I was just going to announce that the Meet the Mayor and Police have two more scheduled. The next one being July 22nd from two to four, and the next one, August 26th from five to seven. And I don't know what the format would be, Mayor. Do you know what the format is on that yet? Is it Zoom?
I think Laura's still working on that as to whether we're going to conduct it as we did the first one, or whether we're going to conduct it as we did the second one. And hopefully, everyone will recognize me, because that's the day I shaved my beard.
Well, the next thing is the, the Summer Concert Series. Just a reminder that it's the fourth Wednesday of each month at Ryan Hummer Park. And that goes on through September from six to eight. So that's the fourth, the fourth Wednesday. And also, Let the Meat Art has been canceled. These things are all on the website, but for those that may not see it. But in place of that, we're doing wandering Wednesdays, which started on July 1st. And I've been to two of them already. They are nice. There's musicians playing around through town. And it's from four to eight on Wednesdays, and you can grab some food and eat in the dining tents that are set around town. And it's just kind of nice to stroll through the neighborhood. And tomorrow night is going to be one, it's going to be a baguette hunt. It sounds intriguing to me. There's four baguettes, and they're hidden around town somewhere. And I did see that there was a hint that there's going to be a French flag by each one of them, so good luck with that. I'm never good with hunts, so, but I'm still going anyway, just for the fun. But that should be tomorrow night, and then the Mid-County Chamber put out a notice that they would be doing Taste of Maplewood differently than normal. It would be August 19th through the 26th. And there wasn't a lot of detail, but it sounds like we just want to support our small businesses by either ordering online or just going, you know, through the streets and, and trying to support them. So that week, we could all make an effort to, to do that in support. And the last thing that I had was the Aquatic Center is now going to be having the St. Louis Wards of 23 and 24 able to use the pool now. That's it for me.
Okay, and to add on with regards to Concert Series, I was in conversation with both Laura Miller, the Director of Community Development, and Janine Beck, the Executive Director of the Chamber. And there's some talk about facing the bandstand the other way, so that there's a much larger area for people to congregate, you know, on the, on the fields there. So I'm not sure if that's going to, in fact, take place that way, but it's one of the considerations so that we can provide the proper amount of social distancing. Any other announcements? Item number eight is the approval of the June 23rd, 2020 city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Are there any changes or modifications?
I did want to note, there's a couple of typos in the public comments in terms of the misspelling of, of the names of the folks who are commenting.
Okay, we'll get that information to the city clerk and make those changes so that it's correct in the meeting minutes.
Andy, if you can email me those, I'll forward those to Karen Scheit.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor? Hi.
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 Any opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved. Item number nine is the Sun 'N Station redevelopment agreement discussion.
Mayor Greenberg, Mayor Greenberg, members of the council, I put this one on the agenda, basically, in the event that their city council, if they have any additional questions or comments to hear from the developer and/or if the developer has anything else to add, there, actually, I just saw GT, that hand go up. So it's okay, I'll bring GT in on this at this point. It's okay, I'll bring GT in on this at this point.
Sure.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thanks. So I actually don't have anything to present tonight. However, I do have Mark Murray, who's the attorney from Armstrong Teasdale. He's in the Zoom meeting if there's questions regarding the amendment that we presented specifically. And then also Matt Kreider, who is the chairman of the Board of Sunnens. He's also the oldest grandchild of Sunnens Products Company. He is prepared to make remarks. So I wanted to let everyone know that. And then if you have questions for Mark, that's fine. Otherwise, Matt can be unmuted.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of the representatives from Sun Station?
Not yet.
The one question that I have is the, the cap on the tax abatement is, the question is, is that negotiable? Is it all or nothing?
Matt, if you want to try to unmute yourself if you can hear us.
Should we go ahead and let Mr. Kreider make his statement?
Matt, can you hear us?
That's fine.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we can now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm either way on that. Just, I'd just like to say a couple of things about Sunnens and Maplewood, if you don't mind. And then I'll let GT kind of do our end of it. But first off, I wanted to thank the council. I've been to the last couple of video meetings. I was at the live meeting back, I think, in March. That was my last trip to St. Louis, actually. And it's obvious that the council's put a lot of thought into this, and I appreciate that. And from a developer's standpoint, that's kind of all I can ask is that you really, you know, took an active interest in the project and turned over all the leaves you needed to make your decision. And that's from my end, and that's a fair shake. I did want to say a few things about Sunnens Maplewood. When Marty retired, I think maybe some of the history between Sunnens Maplewood kind of maybe slipped through the cracks. And I just wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about Sunnens. That's my job. I'm the face of the company. I don't really trust anybody else to do that but me. Like GT said, I'm the oldest grandson of the founder, Joe Sunnens. He moved that business to Maplewood in the early twenties. I think it was part of the roaring twenties. The automobile business was taken off. Sunnens Products was making a lot of devices that he invented to help maintenance in the automotive business. St. Louis was, at the time, like the second only to Detroit as far as the automotive business. And he brought the business to St. Louis in the twenties. I don't know if anybody has, you've seen the building with the dome in it at Sunnens. That, we called that the Thirty Building, but it was actually built in nineteen twenty-nine. And that was our first kind of deal in Maplewood. And we've been there over, you know, ninety-something years now. And we've got a good relationship with Maplewood. We've tried to do redevelopment in the right way. We've had a great relationship with the council over the years. I'm just kind of hoping that will continue. The, our facility there in Manchester is the world headquarters of Sunnens. You know, we serve like seventy or eighty countries. We export stuff to China from there. I mean, this is a, it's a, you know, we're proud of that business. And for as global as we are, we're about as small a business as you can be and still have that kind of a footprint globally. And I just wanted to say again, I appreciate the council considering everything here. And we've tried to do this development in the right way. It's expensive property. We bought that at the height of two thousand and eight. We displaced residents there. We didn't have to do an eminent domain or anything like that. They were glad to see the development come in. These things are not without a lot of risk. In the last four or five years, apartment things, you've seen them spring up everywhere. And it looks like an easy way to do things. But you take this COVID thing, and I know y'all have been concerned about it, too. I watch the rent rolls every, every month when, you know, people, when rents are due. It's, it could get very difficult in this business, and we just kind of want a fair shake, and we want to make it on our own after that. Thanks for everything and considering our project.
Thank you, Matt.
I had some thoughts.
Please.
As Mr. Kreider, you know, hinted at, you know, I think a lot of us have spent a lot of time looking at this proposal. You know, Sunnens came to us back in March and asked us to get rid of the cap, and we said no. And so they've come back to us and asked us to just, to increase the cap. They're actually asking for two things now, to increase the cap to fifteen million and also to extend the dates by which they have to complete, they want to subdivide Lot E and extend it. Complete the second part of Lot E. So in looking at this new proposal, I decided to go back to the beginning and what the deal was, that the parties reached less than five years ago. And so assuming that the statutory authority allows someone for ten years at a hundred percent and fifteen years at fifty percent. And I'm assuming a savvy business people, that's what was requested. Changed itself in the beginning, and this council agreed only to ten years, a hundred percent, and five years, fifty percent. But they didn't stop there. They said, in addition, the most you can get at that is twelve million dollars. So I took a look through the redevelopment agreement. I found was, that's not where it stopped, right? They, that whole thing was really heavily negotiated. Well, it also inserted completion dates for each lot that had to be met. And if the city, or I'm sorry, Sunnens would lose its abatement, you know, to correspond with the period of time it was late. So, for example, if one of the lots, one year later than they were supposed to, they would lose a year of abatement, starting with a hundred percent. And so, um, well, another thing that was negotiated, and then the next thing that was in there is that Sunnens allowed to recoup redevelopment costs. Through a CID, they have a one percent, you know, that they can recover some portion of their costs. However, that is also subject to the cap. So it's not just the abatement, also the redevelopment. So in addition to that, so in addition to extending that cap to fifteen million, you're also asking us to extend these dates. And those do come at a cost to us, right? We did that last year. We extended the ability to, you know, allowed you to finish lots, I think, C and D. We extended that out a couple of years. You know, that's a cost of several hundred thousand to us that we gave up, which is fine, but it also pushes out when we start to get to collecting that money, too. So there is a cost to that ask as well. And so you're asking to do that again and extend for another couple of years. So, you know, I looked at it, and I said, well, why are you, we've asked, why are you asking for it? And I asked a question at the first meeting that said, you know, what do I tell my constituents? Several of whom, this raises the issue tonight, that their property taxes went up, and they can't come to us for money. So, you know, why should we let you have this happen to you? And so, you know, you're, because I have to imagine, as savvy business people, that was a risk you assume. Property taxes do go up. They're assessed regularly. That when you sign this deal, you knew that was a possibility. And so, you know, I said, then we said, why, you know, we're not getting anything, like, why should we give it to you? And you said, well, we're going to develop this property. We're going to bring more people into Maplewood, spend more money. But then you're also describing a project that has its own pool, it has its own dog thing, it has its own workout. So you're not going to use our amenities for that in terms of shopping. That would, Shooks is just as far as Maplewood. So there really doesn't seem to be any guarantee that, like, that necessarily bringing people in. It just wasn't really a compromise. In addition, we said, hey, you know, we're giving, we negotiated this whole deal, and you want to change it. What are you going to give us? I heard every meeting, I heard someone ask about affordable housing. You know, what component, what can you give us? And each time, you know, we kind of didn't get affirmative until the last meeting where you said, no, it's not possible. And I had my constituents, who, every single constituent who has reached out to me or has spoken at a public forum has said they're against it. And so essentially, I've not heard one person say, please do this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in my knowledge of the government. So essentially, what you're asking us to do is to tell our residents and our constituents that we should give you more money to do what you're already promised to do and are required to do. And you're getting nothing additional in exchange for this. And the reason is essentially because you're making less money than you initially thought, right? Your property taxes went up, just like ours, and you're going to make less money. And so for me, it's really difficult and uncomfortable to say to my constituents that we're going to do that. As far as extending the dates, I, I am okay with that. I feel like your development schedule you agreed to was extremely aggressive today. So I am committed to developing it. So for me, even though that does come at a cost, I would be willing to do that. But I just feel like increasing the cap is just, I'm not comfortable with that. I have some other questions, but I'll stop now and let someone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for the Sunnens team?
I would just like to take a moment to really echo what Councilmember Schmidt just shared in that a lot of these concerns shared are ones that I hold to, or ones that my constituents hold to as well, and are exactly what we've been hearing from our constituency who have been participating in these meetings. You know, we talked a lot today, just now, about risk and fair shake. And I fundamentally believe that, you know, there is risk in every business venture, and the city cannot be responsible for every risk that every business takes on. And I think, too, about the realities of the pandemic, the realities of our own tax base, and the burden of sales tax and our own financial situation. And can't help but think that we don't know what's going to happen in the next year, in the next two years. And so that great unknown, to me, makes us an incredibly physically irresponsible idea at this time. I would be open to an extension of the timeline, but also understand, too, that this agreement was done in partnership with the developer, and that this, at one point, this deadline was acceptable. And I'm not super enthused at the idea of extending it, but I am open to that type of compromise.
Yeah, I'll just add real quick, since I was part of the council when we originally negotiated this, there was a reason that it was tough. We had just, excuse me, given seven million to another developer to develop property. And, you know, Sunnens have been good to Maplewood, treated everybody right there. So that's why we had a generous, I thought was a generous package at the time. And it took a little while to negotiate. But as I said, we first started that it would be physically responsible for the council. We have no idea economically what's going to happen here in the next year or so. I have a feeling that a downturn is going to come sooner than later. And I don't feel that the school district and our constituents need to be in line for anything else. They have enough to worry about. I do like an extension of the timeline. I think that's gracious. We've done it before, and I don't mind doing it a couple more years to help with that. But, you know, as I said before, we don't, there is no, there's no blood to give out of this turnip. We just don't know, and we need to be physically responsible. And again, I'll reiterate, Sunnens has been great for Maplewood. We've done a lot of great things together, and we put that contract together. Everybody was in agreement. It was, it was, it was great. It was awesome. And I can't, I couldn't vote for more money, but I can definitely vote for a time extension to get this done. So, you know, I understand times are tough and, and it doesn't have unlimited corporate munitions at the school district, for sure. So they just had to pass a thirty-million-dollar bond in order to pay for their stuff. So, you know, you have to weigh up the considerations when we look at this decision, so.
Is there any other council members that would like to speak right now, ask questions? It appears to me that, go ahead.
I just want to add that I agree with everything that my fellow council members have said. You know, I think about what has happened recently and sort of the situation that we're in now. And the fact that our school district is largely funded by property taxes. And when you combine the portion, portion of property tax that goes to the school district and to special school districts, it's a significant amount. And our, you know, our school district just had to pass a thirty-million-dollar bond. And we asked our residents to vote on a sales tax to assist with our city budgeting. And we're in the midst of a global pandemic, and I agree with Sean that we, the economic downturn, the full force of it is, is probably, you know, is yet to come. That it feels not prudent to, to add an additional three million dollars to an already generous payment package. And, and when I also use an equity lens to look at this question and this budgeting decision, and I ask who benefits and who is harmed, I can see that a good, a very important and good partner to the city is benefiting. And when I think about who could be harmed, I think about our, our city, our residents, our children, and taxpayers who are paying additional sales tax right now. So when I think about that, I don't feel like I could support an additional tax abatement dollar amount.
Okay, based on the fact that we've had four council members speak articulately about some of the concerns they have with regards to this, this issue, you know, the only thing that we can do in a public session is either vote yes or no. I don't think that Sunnens wants us to vote no. So it appears that we need to go, to hold a closed session tonight to discuss what would be acceptable, to negotiate an acceptable solution that we can then present to, to Sunnens at that point. So at this point, I'll give Sunnens one last chance to make any comments that they would like to before we then go on with the council meeting and then go into closed session and discuss some of the same topics that we've already addressed with the full input from the council. Is there anyone at Sunnens that would like to, to speak again?
Sure, this is GT. Thanks for all the comments. Councilmember Schmidt, I think you did a good job of summarizing the original agreement. You are right, that the CID incentive that we have is something to the cap, too. The comment you made with regards to lots C and D, I think, just so everyone, I just want the, I think the, whatever we negotiate with regards to the agreement, I'll try to keep the closed session. But just to comment on stuff that I think is important for the public right now. Lot C and D, we sold the Porsche, and we actually wanted Porsche to develop that lot. And this, Marty and the city asked for our approval to give them an extension to develop their lot for whatever dealership they're going to put in. So I don't think it's fair to put that on Sunnens extending lots C and D. I think that was the, between the city and Porsche, quite frankly, they just asked for our approval rights. And then, and then to address, you know, who this, I think, benefits most specifically. I mean, I, I think it's important for the public to know that the abatement of, the four million of abatement, everyone's correct. It's, it's there, and it's going to be there, you know, per our projections. It's going to be there for whatever projects we put there for ten-plus years, right? So that, that's there in the short term, anyway, when we talk about kind of how it's affecting people. So what we're, what we're really talking about is what's, what's the benefit of this tax abatement? So, so what we're, what we're really talking about is what's, what's the benefit of this tax abatement? Who's the benefit for in the long term? And, and yes, it will benefit Sunning. My opinion is that it benefits the school district the most in the end if Sunning develops more. If Sunning can't develop more because they don't get the abatement and they leave that extra lot the way it is, or turn it into a parking lot instead of a $30 million project, then down the road, the school district benefits none and Sunning benefits none. And so I, I think I probably didn't express that as clearly as I wanted to in previous meetings. But I think at least the whole goal of more development from our standpoint is so that it benefits Maplewood, the school district, and Sunning. And that's why we're asking for it, so we can, so we can do more. I, I think that's all the comments I'd have, I guess, from the public session. But I know that Sunning is fully prepared to go into closed session too, so we appreciate your willingness to do that. I can't hear if Mayor's talking, sorry, too.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. If there's no further discussion, then we'll move on to item number 11.
Mayor.
Yes.
Jackie Graves, the city attorney. I have just a question, which is, do you all intend to come back to number 10? And if so, we need to amend the agenda to place it after number 19. So there's a question of, are you, are you planning to go into closed session and come back out? Or do you plan to go into closed session, negotiate, and then raise it at the next council meeting?
Shouldn't we just table it?
Yeah, I was thinking we should just table it. That's my opinion.
I thought, are they, I think they're on a timeline. I don't know what we've said affects that, but I think they were trying to close their project.
Okay.
So.
What Jackie's saying, and what Jackie's saying is you could table it till the next meeting. But Jenny's saying is you can amend the agenda to push it back behind the executive session. Mayor, I think the headset is, is on. I don't know if people can hear that background. I've been a lot of feedback. I muted you just, I've been muting different people throughout the meeting to try to figure out what, it's kind of hard to hear. I think that's it. I apologize. I just.
Okay, let me know if that's better.
That is.
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Sorry for, I couldn't figure out who it was. It took a while. So that, Jackie, correct, they could do one of the, one of the two?
Yes.
So we can move it to 19A and reopen this, this, or start another Zoom session?
Yes. You would need to.
Going on an amended, something that's amended, right?
You, you would need to amend the agenda to do that, and that takes a two thirds vote. And then, yes, you could go in this closed session, have a discussion. And then when you came out, you would move to amend the resolution that's currently on the table.
This is GT. Can you guys still hear me or no?
Yes.
I think Sunning's okay. If we, if we discuss something in the closed session, I think we're okay waiting till the next council meeting to vote on just so we can get a document drafted that everyone's comfortable with, and we could have more time to think through it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
So we'll just table each of the next council meeting then, item 10, I'm assuming.
Table.
We have a motion to table.
Was that a second?
Second?
Yeah.
We have a motion and second. This is a roll call.
Motion to table, a voice vote, Jackie?
Yes, it's procedural.
Okay, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is tabled. And we'll be talking about it in closed session. Item number 11 then is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager to sign a small vehicle sharing program agreement with the cities of Brentwood, Clayton, and Richmond Heights.
Motion to approve, okay.
We have a motion and a second. I have a few questions. How many vendors are we anticipating will respond to? I assume there's going to be an RFP.
Yes, honestly, I don't know exactly how many they're anticipating. I know of two or three, but I don't know that they've figured out or have, have an estimate. I could find out and let you know at the next meeting.
Are they planning on multiple vendors or just one?
Well, they're hoping that, oh, I, I mean, they can do multiple vendors if they want. But I mean, I doubt we'll get more than one in the area.
I don't even know who's in the business these days. But and there, there was a within the, the text of that particular item, it referred to three communities in one place instead of the four communities that are now being included in the proposal.
It's in the permit requirements. They added Clayton, like, on the front and at the top. And then in the purpose, they forgot to add them. And then they, in section 30, they refer the three instead of four. Is this, is this the exact same agreement we signed, we agreed to last time? It just has added Clayton to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll get that, those two amendments in there. And I'll let, I'll let Brentwood and Richmond Heights and Clayton know about that as well, so we're all on the same page.
Okay, is there further discussion with regard, or questions with regards to this, this resolution?
Had a question. Is it mainly bicycles and scooters or is there other things out there? Those are the ones I see when I'm out walking in Forest Park. So I didn't know if there's others that would be used or not.
That, that is all I've ever seen. I, anyone else anything besides the scooters and the bikes?
That's all I've ever seen too, so.
No, and the scooters are, are fun, are actually kind of neat, so.
Yeah, but highly dangerous, but.
Yeah, I actually, they kind of are.
Yeah, you can get bikes, and I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, as far as small vehicles, I think that there's probably going to be a consideration to add electric bicycles since they've become so popular. So, you know, in terms of regulation there, at some point, we probably want to, if it was up to me, I would regulate the speed, the maximum speed of, you know, of an electric bike. Because that, you know, now we're approaching the, you know, the realm of motorcycles and other, you know, vehicles like that. But anyway, that's, I guess that's off in the distance, so.
I just wanted to note, too, as I recall, which I think is really nice about the program, is that you don't have to have a credit card or a cell phone to be able to use it, which I think is a really great piece because not everybody has those things. So I just want to remind everyone that I think that's, I hope that they are able to accomplish that.
I don't know how, but yeah, it, it's a good provision. So we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crosley?
Aye.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution 20 dash 21 is approved.
Thank you. Item number 12 is an ordinance of the City of, the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri to re-adopt and to establish and make public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any, any questions here? Some of us have done this, what, 16 times or 17 times?
Many times.
But for everyone else, are there any questions? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri to re-adopt and, and to establish and make public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number 13 is a discussion of Maplewood's boards and commissions. Eleanor, would you like to start that one?
I'm sure, and I am offering it. So one of the I put together just a few things that have come up in over the course of a lot of time. So there's the application and nomination process, term limits, and the idea of reapplying the possibility of some boards and commissions having the opportunity to be on the agenda at city council meetings, so they have regular touchpoints and some general idea of what the chair is doing. So I think we should start with the application and nomination process. We talked about that in February, kind of made some goals, but didn't move our goals forward very much. And I think we all really appreciated the comments we got from constituents at the last meeting asking about adding some clarity and considering if we might lower any barriers for applying. So I am wondering what, what everyone is feeling about the idea of moving forward with the advertising positions and using some sort of application form. I'm wondering, did anybody get a chance to look at the forms that some of the other municipalities use?
Yeah.
I, I did look at them, and I thought in each one of them, you know, I'd kind of like to make our own, our, you know, have staff or somebody make our own, because there's some good stuff in each one. But I wouldn't copy any of them exactly, you know? I mean, it's something that bothered me, you know, certain questions that needed to be asked on one of them, you know? So anyway, but there was a lot of good information. Thank you for, for getting that. Yeah, thanks, Eleanor.
I felt the same as Karen when I reviewed it, so.
I think the main thing that we want to do is, is for people to express their interest, express why they would, you know, be of benefit to the border commission and perhaps what qualifications they have that might, that might lend themselves to, you know, to the board and commission. You know, those, those are the main, main issues without having to necessarily produce a CV or a resume.
Just so the councils of where I spoke with Laura Miller about this and essentially whatever Mayor Greenberg just said is really all we're going to ask. What's your name? What, what, what board are you interested? Why are you interested in this, and what would you bring to this board? We're going to keep it simple.
Well, sorry, go ahead.
Unless the council wants something more detailed.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did like, there was one that asked, just, it's just a formality, like, are you committed to coming to the meetings?
Yeah. Yeah.
There was one other question that was.
It gets asked, have you ever served on another board or commission, which I think is.
That was.
Help.
Yeah, it was, have you served in an elected or board?
I also like, you could select multiple boards, like, like we've talked about before, that people submit. And then also, like, you can say, well, which are you most interested in? You know, sort of, so that we're aware. But then, you know, they can also identify other ones that they may be interested in certain one as well.
And I will add all those. I like, I really like the idea about the multiple boards. Question I, I have is I thought, and I, and I, we can add that. I'm wondering, you served on a board or elected position before. Last that, but I, I thought the idea was to try to bring the barriers down and simplify it as much as possible from the last discussions, because I thought the, the resume or the application could be, so I, I mean.
I like it the opposite, though, like, it's saying, well, you've already done that, so maybe we have someone else who hasn't had the opportunity. So, but I see what you're saying, it could be used, you know, the other way.
For me, it was sort of related to this idea of not having any kind of, it seems like we don't have any kind of term limits, and so we can have something where a person ends up serving on a board for, I don't even know how many.
Yeah, well, with regard to the term limits, it, it does seem that way because we've had so few applicants for some of the boards. And some of the people have been very effective, they know the process. And so, you know, before reappointing anyone to a border commission, I do talk to the staff member who's in charge of that border commission to see if they've been effective or not. You know, and part of this process that I'm concerned about is that if we, even if we advertise and we don't, we don't get any applicants, or we get an applicant that, you know, you know, may or may not be helpful, you know, we, we still have to deal with those issues too.
And as a staff member, we always talk with, as if somebody's going to be on one of the maybe four boards that I supervise, we always try to at least mention things. For example, if you're going to be on the designer review board, you're meeting monthly for hours at a time. If you're going to be on the board of adjustment, you know, you may be in there for a 25 minute meeting. Honestly, maybe four times a year. And so we, we do try to meet with board members at least to let them know what to expect. But we've already kind of updated that section of our webpage as well, which is kind of nice. We talked about how often that is, so that should hopefully help, help, you know, people when they're, they're picking their interest. I really like multiple boards because you never know what's going to open up when. If somebody's moving or someone is just wants to leave their term early for one, for one reason or another. So I just want to make sure, I, I put our initial four questions, you know, who are you? Why are you interested? What boards are you interested? How may you help this? Have you served on a board or elected position before? And are you going to be committed to make sure you're going to attend these meetings? Please refer to the webpage to see how often these meetings or the frequency of these meetings. And then we'll put something in there to say, please contact. They can just contact myself or Laura. And then for more in-depth discussions about the boards before you submit any information, because I think that's the, I think that's the most important thing. You do have some boards where you have to tell people, no, like, the board of adjustment, and it can put some people in some uncomfortable positions. We're going to amend the dog park hearing issue with the park board. But, you know, I, I've always told members on the park board, this is something you may have to do because it is very unpleasant if you have to hold a dog park hearing. And it's people to get on a board and then not show up or want to get off quickly. So talk to Laura, if it's okay.
Sorry, can I interject, Anthony? I thought that one thing that would be effective is we, if there's sort of special qualifications like that for, that they can be placed in the advertisement that goes on the website of like, this position is open. And then would you be able to send us the, the form draft before you?
Absolutely, that's what I, yep.
Okay.
We'll send an email, send an email out to everyone, and you guys can let me know your thoughts.
Okay, and is it going to be possible to set this up so that the, the results of the form go to all of the council plus perhaps a copy to you or the, the city clerk?
When you say results of the form, what do you mean by that?
So like, when a form is submitted, something comes through on the backend. Is it possible to have whatever comes through on the backend sent to all the council members? So we know that somebody has applied?
I believe Laura handles that. I, I believe it's possible.
It is.
We could set up, you know.
If people can submit.
Contact us, it could go through there, and we could just put everybody on the distribution list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to the council, they can submit like that as well. So, yes, they can.
What do people think about that?
With regards to the boards and commissions, the, when I think Sean and Karen and I started, we were voting on commission members, board members, without knowing anything about them. And so at that point in time, you know, I asked if we could, if some. them, and so at that point in time, uh, you know, I asked if we could, uh, if someone could submit a resume and, or other information. Some people just send in their LinkedIn page, uh, uh, some people, you know, you know, it, it's not as formal of a process with regards to CV or resume. And then also, when they do that, I typically have a discussion with them, see if there's, uh, which, which boards, you know, they would like to, uh, serve on, especially if I get a, uh, if I've received requests, when there isn't necessarily an, an opening, I'll ask them which, which boards and commissions they would, you know, what would be their first choice and second choice. So, you know, I have no problem formalizing that process. Uh, it, it's not like it hasn't happened, but it has, you know, it's not something that, uh, that's necessarily, uh, uh, been, you know, manifests itself in, in a formal process. Uh, also, you know, when I've had situations where, uh, I've received additional information about candidates for boards and commissions that was negative in, in nature, I guess that's one of those things that, you know, we can discuss. Uh, I was, you know, somewhat, you know, reluctant to, you know, to necessarily forward that information, just because, you know, in the past, it's been the prerogative of the mayor to, uh, to make those nominations, but when I received one that wasn't, uh, you know, appropriate, uh, for, for one reason or another, uh, you know, I didn't, uh, I didn't, uh, continue with that nomination, and it, in, uh, you know, in the last three years, uh, I think it's only been once that we've had a, a situation where we've had more, uh, nominations, people wanting to, to serve than we had spaces. Uh, usually, it's the opposite problem that we have, and hopefully, advertising for the position more aggressively will produce a, a stronger, uh, roster of candidates that we can choose from, so.
If it's possible, Mayor Greenberg, to add to one thing that sometimes maybe not everyone's aware of, instances where, um, use a special business district commission, for example, maybe, uh, we've had people that would want to be on the special business district tax advisory board to make decisions on how, uh, business owners' taxes that, that go to that district are spent or distributed. Well, I know for, I, we've had cases where that business owner paid their taxes or paid their business license. To me, if you're not paying that, that might be something staff would say to the mayor, hey, um, Anthony Traxler, yeah, I know he submitted an application, but we never, he can, we never pays his bill, and we've, we've had him in court every year for the last three years to get him to pay bills. That might be something where, um, with staff's connection to that, or something like that does happen, but it's something that we'll make sure to, we've always alerted the mayor, but we'll make sure to, uh, I'll continue to alert the mayor, and if he wants to distribute that, he can, but, uh, just keep that in mind when some of these come in every now and then. There are sometimes extenuating circumstances why someone may not be necessarily a good applicant.
I thought, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say, I say, I, I think the real, the, the process that everybody's trying to create here is that, yes, the, everybody's appointed by the mayor, but certainly, you need a majority of us to agree to it, and we like to get, we've never had a heads up to most of this stuff for years, which understandably, you know, it was kind of the mayor's prerogative, but I think that in, in the current climate, in the, the climate over the last four or five years, I think it's more important to make sure that, that the council is informed, and so, you know, we know who you're gonna nominate and say, yeah, awesome, or, you know, hey, we might actually know of a conflict of interest, or whatever the case may be, so, I, I like the process of those going, so.
No, I, I agree, but it's been a struggle to keep all the boards and commissions filled. Uh, the, uh, historically, we've had a lot more vacancies than we've had in the last three years, and, uh, and I've, I've really tried hard to, you know, to make sure that we have qualified people in all those positions, but hopefully, this process will allow us to have more candidates, uh, and allow us to make, uh, you know, a decision as, as a group. I have no problem with that.
Yeah. Sorry, can Barry, I really appreciate, uh, the work that you have done to, like, all, all of our boards and commissions have been, you know, other than a vacancy that, that crops up, usually because somebody leaves or steps away, um, they've, they've been full, and, um, I really appreciate that effort, and...
I had this discussion, sorry.
I also appreciate, um, Laura Miller has done an incredible job over the last, you know, six, nine months of putting up additional information on, about each board and commission, and the, the, the authority, the, um, the scope of work, the mission of the board, the, what there, what, how many members are, and if there's any special, you know, things about being business owners or residents, and who's the chair, and all of that creates transparency, and I think that kind of transparency for our constituents is part of accountability and creating more engagement, and so, you know, Laura, I really appreciate Laura's work on that.
And I do want to, um, echo Barry's comments. As a staff member who's, with the exception of four years, been here since nineteen ninety-nine and had to oversee a lot of boards, I've never had a situation where they're as full as they are. In fact, my early years, sometimes it was difficult to get quorums, so staff constantly scrambling, trying to make sure, if I tell an applicant, here's your meeting date, I could have that meeting. Mayor Greenberg has done an excellent job making sure those boards are full, and it makes, it makes it a lot easier, uh, for businesses, residents, uh, or just anyone in general, the city of Maplewood, for them to, uh, for us to get stuff done, makes it easier for, when we just schedule meetings, assume that we're gonna get a quorum, because we have enough people, some people can't make it for one way or another, so I did want to mention that. It's been, uh, Mayor Greenberg has a good job with that.
That being said, I, I welcome the, you know, uh, I was handling it by myself, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have other people, uh, participate in the process. Uh, so, uh, is there anything else with regards to boards and commissions?
Yeah.
So, I, along the same topic, I'd just like to add that, um, serving on the planning and zoning commission for two terms, um, I think it does speak to the quality of the candidates that you have selected, and the quality of the, the work that our staff does, that we have such longevity on those, uh, boards and commissions, so, um, so thank you, Barry.
That's me getting lucky every once in a while, yeah. Yeah, it, it depends on who's, who wants to, to serve, but I, I do go out there and ask people, you know, to get involved, and hopefully, especially, uh, if they've served on, uh, or not served, but if they've attended the citizens academy, uh, we, we stand a much better chance of them matriculating into a, uh, a position of responsibility with the city, so, uh, uh, we, we, uh, not only do we want to solicit people for the boards and commissions, but we also want to solicit people to, uh, attend the citizens academy, and hopefully, we'll be able to do that in the, in the near future, uh, because of, uh, the current situation, so.
I was gonna ask that question. Well, one question I was just gonna ask about the citizens academy, because I have had some constituents ask me, we want to know more about city government, and I told them there is such a thing, but they didn't even know there was a citizens academy, um, and these are a group of neighbors that were really interested in learning more, and I was hoping that we would have some kind of idea, but I don't think we can even guess. I didn't even tell her an idea of what I thought, because...
Spring.
I mean, we could...
Karen, it would probably be March is our next, is our, is our hope.
Okay.
We have it, we'd have too many, too many...
I think it would be cool if we could talk about running a virtual citizens academy. I don't know. I mean, I'm doing virtual classes myself right now.
Right now, our plan, right now, our plan is to have a next one in the spring.
In the spring, okay.
Then we can talk about it.
Um, so, one other thing about, uh, that I wanted to touch on, uh, or that definitely touch on about boards and commissions is, um, I think that it might benefit us and also some of the boards and commissions if we, we could have more, we could create a process to have regular touchpoints between them. Um, I, uh, I know this was something that I experienced when I was on sustainability commission, that, um, so, and I, other cities have, um, boards get like a slot in a, in a council meeting agenda, and they can use it to present kind of what they're working on, ask any questions of the council. It's just an opportunity for them to, um, maybe get direction from the council, or for council to ask, you know, to, to make that advisory relationship more strong. Um, so I thought that there were, um, and I was wondering what people are thinking about that, and on that, uh, the thing I sent you, um, I had wondered if, um, like, sustainability commission, um, it seems like library board wants to have a little more contact, um, maybe park board, because they're an advisory board, might, you know, come talk with us twice a year or something like that. And then I wasn't too sure about, um, you know, board of adjustment or design and review and planning and zoning, it, do, they, they might have their finger on the pulse of particular issues that are coming up, and if it would be useful for them to share to us, you know, things that they're seeing happening, and other people would know more.
I think it would, because I've had someone on that board reach out to me before about, like, you know, different trends they're seeing, a member of that board, in terms of building and housing and stuff, so I do think that would be benefit to have design and review, at least have an opportunity to share anything that they're seeing.
Eleanor, were you on the, uh, sustainability commission when they made the presentation to city council?
Um, no, that happened before I was on it.
Okay, well, you know, having created the sustainability commission, I was very involved in the beginning, and I did encourage them to, uh, in this particular case, to narrow down their focus to, uh, a list of, of items that they wanted to deal with, because what happens is that they, especially as sustainability, as you know, uh, it's, it's a very broad topic, and, you know, s- some of those can be implemented, some of them can't be implemented, so the idea was to present a list to city council, and then, uh, it forced us to actually, uh, talk about these things and, and establish priorities, uh, of what we would like for them to, which direction we could go, the things that we could implement, and I thought that interaction was very helpful, and, uh, and you're right, it can be done, uh, with other boards. I served seven years on design and review board, and was president of historic preservation commission, and, and I don't know to what extent it would have helped to make a presentation to city council, but would have, what really would have been helpful is if city council members attended board meetings and commission meetings. Uh, and I know some of you guys have, uh, have sat in on them, but, uh, I've sat in on, uh, at least one of, of each, and I think we should, we should do that on a regular basis, make it our business to visit with them in their native habitat and, uh, and observe what they're doing.
Um, I, I, I like the fact that they would come in, and, and come in front of the council, um, in some kind of rotation, thinks it's a wonderful idea. However, um, when council people are sitting in designer reviews and planning and zoning meetings, can be a little intimidating, I think, sometimes, uh, for the people on the board, and we have seen that in the past, and, uh, I certainly don't want to cross any ethical bounds in terms of their ability, function without interference from us on any given issue. Um, but I do like the fact that we should touch base with them, have them come to us, um, in a rotation, uh, for that. Um, yeah, and, you know, all of them, except for probably board of adjustment, um, you know, planning and zoning would be good to have in front of us, because I think that them and sustainability commission, uh, probably ought to, you know, work on some things together. Uh, but, anyway, I'm not, I'm not for council people going to, especially, um, boards that, that impact ordinances, um, and impact, um, the administration of the city, um, having council people there, I don't think it'd be a good idea.
I, I think a counter to that would be that, uh, you know, uh, there's a difference between a board or a commission making a presentation to city council and them doing what they do in a, in a regular meeting. Uh, I think it's helpful to understand what they do in their meeting. In terms of the imitate, intimidation factor, uh, I've been to quite a few board and, uh, designer review boards, you know, sometimes I've made multiple presentations in, in one evening, but on the other issues, uh, and I usually, I try and have someone else make that presentation, just because, uh, you know, my relationship with the, you know, with the city government, uh, but, you know, the ideas, I think that, uh, you know, you know, with regards to, I'm not sure what, uh, you know, what type of presentation designer review would, would be able to make to us that would give us an idea of what they do, and, you know, I don't know that we really, you know, to what extent we want to have jurisdiction over, of any kind, over what they do.
Well, I think it's, but doesn't designer review, okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, but don't they review plans for people to, like, build new homes and do stuff like that?
Yes, the aesthetic portion, yes.
I think what they can identify, though, for us, are trends that maybe we as a city don't want to see, or we may want to change our laws. That's what I look at that from, is something that they, it could be useful in. I think it kind of could link together with a historic preservation piece and that kind of stuff, and it seems like, I, I like this idea, too, and maybe we start with one for each, and start in the order of which one likely would have the most status or the most impact on what we do, and do one for each and just go from there, would seem to...
And a perfect example of that, Barry, is solar panels. Every single time you gotta put a solar panel on your house, you need to go to the board of adjustment, which is ridiculous. So, yes, I think it is important that they come to us and say, hey, here are trends, people want to put solar panels in their home, except every time, we have to send them to board of adjustment, because our ordinances don't account for it. So then we can sit down as council and say, well, let's change the darn ordinances, or have planning and zoning say, hey, this is what they should be, and we can take it from there, so that there is...
I, I don't disagree with you on that, but if someone attends a board of adjustment meeting and sees what's going on, then, uh, I think it's, it's a much more convincing argument. Uh, yeah, I would think that the board of adjustment would have to, uh, you know, provide several different examples for us, so that we understand the frequency and, and understand the discussion that they have. You know, there's, there's reasons that, uh, certain things fall under the jurisdiction of, of the board of adjustment, and certain things fall under the jurisdiction of designer review board and historic preservation. Uh, and so I'm not, you know, having served on that, I'm not sure what, you know, for seven years, I'm not sure what kind of presentation, you know, you know, I would make as an architect to city council to address, you know, trends or, you know, or things like that.
Well, I mean, they can also just explain to us what they do, right? Like, I mean, I would love to just hear them tell us, you know, what, what they do in their meetings every time they meet, or what they're, I mean, I can read the description, but, I mean, the reality is, I can't go to every single board and commission meeting, so unless we each have one, we attend and report back, this to me makes the most sense from an efficiency point.
Yeah, right, I agree with that.
So, I do think they, you know, and maybe they give us one, and then we don't need another one for a year, like Eleanor's pointing out, you know, so I think if we just start it and see, and then we can go from there, it seems to make sense.
Yeah, because, you know, a lot of it's in the nuance. If you go to designer review board meeting, I can describe in, in one sentence what they do. However, you know, sitting through a whole meeting and seeing what type of issues, you know, and what kind, sometimes what kind of submissions they get, uh, you know, before I was on that, uh, you know, the submissions were sometimes on the back of a, a napkin, and we established very specific requirements for, uh, you know, for submission, so we could actually figure out what they were trying to, you know, to, to design or to build, and, uh, you know, so, you know, you know, we...
Can I, can I just interrupt real quick? I, I think it sounds like we have pretty good agreement that we would like to try to set up a schedule for the boards and commissions to start rotating through, getting to have the chance to interact with council in a discussion at council meetings. Does that sound right? Um, maybe I can, uh, work with Anthony on trying to figure out a schedule and having some communication with the, with the boards?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, we, we can, we can work to move this forward.
Yes, I am for rotations. I'm for them rotating in front of us, all the appropriate... I'm for them rotating in front of us, all the appropriate boards.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Just keep in mind, we're asking people that aren't getting paid, that are making this commitment. To make us, you know, another commit, not that it's a big one by any means.
I feel, I think that another benefit of this is that sometimes the, um. If, if there's not enough connection or, or direction. Sometimes a board can feel like it's spinning its wheels and be restarting over and over and not really have a sense of what it's doing. Which can create a sense of disengagement and might lead to people wanting to resign, which is, you know, we definitely want to make it. If people are generously sharing their time with our city engagement, we want it to be feeling really productive. The only other thing which we don't have to tackle now is the, the idea of term limits. Or whether or not people sort of resubmit an application, even if it's a formality, when they are reapplying for a position.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to address that because I do think, just like us, you know, at the end of our term, we have to come back and get elected. I think that not doing that, you know, I know it leaves a longevity, but it also leaves a lack of diversity. Because you have the same people and I think do you have people who are interested in serving? And so they don't get the opportunity if we just keep reappointing people without opening it up. And so, you know, I think that I would be in favor of you having to reapply. Each time your term is up, you know, and if no one else applies, then, you know, great for them, you know.
Yeah, historically, uh, however, and I'm hoping that changes, uh, no one has ever been. Not, not been able to get on a border commission because it's, you know, uh. You know, but then again, you know, we're not advertising it as a vacation either. So I'm not. You know, we can say that these, these terms are up and if you want to apply, you know, and we throw them in the hopper with, you know. The people that are already there. I have no problem with that.
Is there, is there a certain, unless someone leaves the board early, I guess, or were, I guess they could have been appointed in a weird way. I don't know. Is it, do they always come up at the same times of year or is it all over the map? Cause I know we're in June, right?
Right.
They typically end in the fiscal year, but it just depends on when they're appointed and how long their term. Usually a lot of times it's more of a housekeeping issue where we'll do multiple resolutions at one time. Just in, in, that's usually by reaching out to a lot of these members and seeing or expressing interest again. And so, uh, they may have been appointed, you know, at a staggered point or maybe a full term, but. It still ends at the same time. That's usually why you get a, a large group at the same time.
I just, I thought it'd be helpful if people knew like, oh, it's coming up on, on June, there's going to be positions available. They'll know that's time to start looking for those, you know, that's why I was bringing it up. So.
Yeah, I just want everyone to be aware, in the past, we have, we have advertised these in the newsletters. So, um, you know, again, hopefully by additional advertising and, and we also have social media now. Which to me is, is huge and some, a, a, a method of communication we didn't have in the past. So hopefully we can get more, but we, I just want to make it clear, we, we did, um, advertise these somewhat frequently. Especially when our only real means was the, the newsletter. But, um. I'll work with, uh, the board member, I'll talk with the various, uh, chair, chairpersons of the various boards and, and let them know what's going on. As, uh, council member Falkingham said, I don't really see a reason at this point for board of adjustment, they meet so infrequently. But we'll start with, probably start with designer review board. Or sustainability, maybe. Pardon me?
Yeah.
Maybe sustainability. If we're talking about a couple of items, you know, one thing you could talk to the board of adj-, uh, the designer review board is about, uh. Homes with large garages coming off the front of their, uh, you know, uh, the facade where. You know, um, that, that's one of the complaints we've had with some of the newer homes, you know, um, park board. If they were going to come to you right now, they would show up at the meeting and say, get rid of these dog car carriers. So I mean, there are opportunities for some of these members and Sean brought up the, uh. Adjustment many years ago, staff initiated an amendment because the board of adjustment kept denying handicap ramps. People trying to get into their home. And so we created an administrative process where I can approve those. Um, so every now and then, um, they come up and I think we could just, um. Try to get everyone before the council, that's what I'm hearing. And then we can establish a frequency later, depending on how it goes. Does that sound good with the rest of the, the city council? I could start with the sustainability, is that what I heard?
Yeah, sounds great.
Start on that. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number fourteen, which is council communication. Do we have any communications from council members?
I just, I just want to really quickly say, I, I know that there's a lot of concern, um, about mask wearing. I'm dead, highly diligent because I believe experts and scientists and all that kind of good stuff, unfortunately. For, at a national level, it's, it's been a little trickier. And I think that that's why businesses are a little hesitant. Uh, to confront people only because they're, they have seen so much, uh, aggressive behavior, uh, behind it. And, uh, you know, I, I wish there was something we could do, um, you know, the mask police, but. Uh, I, 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 I'm just not sure, just with diligent education and, 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 you know, businesses doing everything that they can. To ensure the safety, the best thing you can do is just lead by example. And, um, you know, I, I think, uh, to, to the point that, uh, one of the public participants made. That, you know, I think it's important that, that all of our employees, um, as much as human, humanly possible. Especially those on the forefront, uh, police and, and city hall workers should be wearing, uh, masks, especially if they're up and about walking around. Uh, talking to somebody in a car or something like that. I think that's, I think that's very important.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, um, wanted to do an update on the racial equity thing, but I want to let other people talk first. I can go last.
Who else, uh?
I, I just had a quick question. Um, I know some of the neighbors have been asking about. Traffic and speeding and everything. There's one question I have about the, the traffic calming thing that you sent to us, Anthony. Thank you for that. Uh, but I don't know how to tell if a street is an arterial or a collector. Or a primary emergency vehicle route. I was just wondering, is there somewhere I can find that out? What streets are, I mean.
We would, we could up, we could probably, we could create a map through, uh, GIS to show you. We, we could probably do that. I really didn't know where that stood, cause if, just to kind of, it's okay if I talk about that now, um. You're, we, we'd always had a, a standards for speed bumps. And, um, then when Marietta came, Marietta did not meet those standards. But the difference there is it was just such a heavy volume of traffic and you also had the business district there. So at that point, um, Marty asked me to update those. That's what I did with that draft. And I didn't know where it went, if the council had seen it or what. And so, um, with our traffic study coming up, which I'm getting, putting together a request for proposals right now. When that goes out, one of the things I was hoping to have them do was review those and. See if they agree with those, with that, uh, but then as long as the council's okay with it and doesn't have any problems. That's something I plan on basically putting on our website and starting to adopt and, and council member Wood, we can get you a map that, that shows you that as well.
So I know I looked at that and I don't know if maybe I just got it because I was working on Marietta or if we as a group talked about it. I can't remember. That's why I didn't know if you have any idea of like what, what part of what year that was drafted in that I can go back. Cause I can't find.
Yeah, it was definitely around Marietta was afterwards because I, I. Not the, the bumps did not meet our current. Requirements. So at that point, we said, all right, you know, if we're going to have some procedures, we need to make sure to follow them. So let's, let's amend these. So Marty said, get me something different. And that's what I put together. And I, I just didn't know where it went from there.
And I can't remember because I know I looked at it, but I don't remember in what context. So I'll go back and try to find.
Well, I forwarded those exact qualifications off to Richmond Heights a couple of weeks ago. They know they're having issues as well. So, um, when we do our traffic study, I'll make sure our consultant looks those over briefly. See if they have any potential suggestions. We'll continue to work with, uh, on the, with the GIS to get the, the map council member Wood was asking about. And as far as I'm concerned, i- if you have a chance, I know it was short notice when I sent those out. Cause I got an email from council member Phillips about traffic and just, you know, an update on that. And so when you get a time, there's no rush, just take a look at it. And if you want to respond to me via email and, and respond to all, that way everyone gets to see and. If I don't hear anything, I'll assume it's good, but otherwise if I need to make some changes, uh, just like I said, feel free to reply to all and, uh. And I'll make sure it gets done.
Do you have a deadline for us, Anthony? I responded deadlines.
A deadline for, for what council member?
When you want us to respond to you about this.
It's going to be, uh, there's not going to be any rush because I mean, we still have to get the, the traffic consultant. We're talking, that's going to be months before the study's even done. So. How about two months?
If you're like me, Eleanor, next week or you'll never do it.
Yeah.
Don't give me an out.
Council member Partanian Schmidt, next week, everyone else, whenever. Uh, it just, just one quick thing to add when, uh, cause I had originally worked on getting speed bumps here in Maplewood, uh, with Marty. And, uh, um, it, Marty did fight me a little bit about what kind of roads, um, that they could be on. And, um, uh, the reason why we picked the tables is because they're just not, they're, they're more effective at slowing traffic down. I talked to, um, city administrators, um, uh, in several states, uh, when we. And, um, I, I really do, I, I, I'm glad we're doing the traffic study because I, we, we have to expand off of this residential street. Deal because, um, people speed through here like nobody's business and all of those streets that come off of Manhattan up to Greenwood. But we need to be able to give them some, some way of calming the traffic because there are several kids that live on those streets. And, um, uh, I, I've seen people blow through stop signs, have been hit almost a couple of times through there. So we just, uh, when we did get that consult, we, we really need to look at that. Cause Marty always told me it was, it was, it was the insurance company. And this time I'm going to want to see a document from the insurance company because I don't, I don't think that was the case. St. Elmo is probably the street you're referring to. I, we did.
St. Elmo and Piccadilly.
And Manhattan, I used to live on Manhattan. It was horrible.
I could not, I thought somebody was stomping on the traffic counters when I saw St. Elmo's, um, cause it's a very small street. I had not, didn't realize about the connectivity to McCoslin there.
Yeah.
One thing to keep in mind when we, when we are doing this is for every action, there's a reaction. So we'll use, uh, Elm and, uh, Flora as a good example. You put speed bumps on one street, if there's an easy road one block away. There, the traffic and the speed and the volume is just going to be shifted there. So it's, speed bumps are obviously expensive and. Um, so we just want to be careful how many, we do want to keep some standards. So they're not on every. No, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to argue that because traffic is like water. So you'd always find the easiest path through it, doubt. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I just want to, uh, maybe reiterate that if we're, um, doing the traffic study. One of the things that we had talked about initially was potentially sharing costs with Richmond Heights and potentially with the MRH school district. Um, because we all impact each other.
I think, I think at least what I initially remember was the school district, especially in the, in the, in your ward, uh, council member Phillips. Because of the, the ECC and then also, uh, near Oakland and the high school. So I'll reach out to, um, the superintendent and see, see what they say. A while back, I'd mentioned it to him and. Get to it later. So I'll follow up with them. I, um. Cost for Richmond Heights that I could think of right now that they'd be interested in is West Bruno. So, but I could, I will definitely reach out and ask.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd really like to advocate for a partnership with Richmond Heights on this. Um, I've heard directly from constituents who are concerned about, um, a street in my ward that's being used. As a cut through, but on one half of it, it's Maplewood. On the other half, it's Richmond Heights and they've sort of been. In a tough position and car mirrors are going missing left and right and that sort of thing. So if there's an opportunity to share that cost. Um, and get the, get their involvement, I'd be really interested in.
Is that West Bruno?
I think so.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah.
It is probably serious. If you talk about complaints and concerns and honestly, all legitimate.
Yep.
Definitely probably one of the worst streets and the one council member Falkingham, that area is that he also brought up the, uh, the Manhattan, St. Elmo area. Uh, Rich, Richmond place is also, it's a lot of traffic reward as well.
Yeah, I'd like to advocate for something about Bellevue while we're here because I'm a resident of Bellevue and it's a lot of speeding and. Okay.
Everyone tells me, council member Crossley, everyone tells me that they're going forty, fifty miles an hour and I'm like, whatever. They're not kidding right there on Bellevue, uh, especially.
Oh, don't I know it. I can hear it. So I can hear during this meeting. Yep. I would love to see that data if you can share it to me. I would really love to review that.
Yes, I'll definitely send it to you. And I, and I have been over the, over the last, you know, eighteen months, if not longer. I've been saving emails and contacts I've had with problem areas that I'll make sure to relay to the consultant. And then I'll also follow up with those residents just so they're aware, hey, the request for qual- qualifications is out. You know, there is a light at the end of the tunnel and I'll make sure your area is, uh, you know, affected. And I may even forward those to whoever the consultant is, they can reach out directly to residents. I'll get you those speed counts.
Are you collecting? I was just wondering if you're touching base with, I think, Officer, um, Forrest. Uh, about problem areas. Yeah, I know sometimes they get reported to, to there, um, people requesting. Additional traffic patrols or something, um.
Typically, if I get a count, I forward it to the chief in place and then he sends it out to each and every officer. And, uh, as council member Phillips and council member Wood can attest, we just, we got complaints about Burdell and I just sent them, uh, detailed. Showing some of the issues that's usually.
Just when you're, when you're collecting like your list of problem areas, you might want to ask them for what has gone through them. That, that hasn't necessarily gone through you, just as another piece of data.
Okay, we'll do that for sure.
And I guess I was just touching on Bellevue may be of interest to the school district too. Because that is, you know, the road you take to get, you know, there's a lot of kids that have to cross that to get to the elementary school. So if that, if people are going forty and fifty miles an hour, that's pretty dangerous.
Okay, thank you. We'll definitely do that.
Yeah. Eleanor, you're going to give us an update?
Yeah, um, so I, I want to say first of all, thank you to all of my fellow council members. Also to Anthony and, um, Laura and others in the city for their like willingness to. Lean in and learn together and begin our own training and capacity building. Um, I really want to honor how much everybody has been willing to, um, get involved in training. So, and I also wanted to share with folks, um, you know, our constituents who were watching. You know, last time we, when we, uh, last meeting, when we had a, opened the discussion about, um. The racial equity, uh, potential council and, and bigger work in general. We all made a verbal commitment to attend training and I wanted to just share again that the. Good news that we got confirmation today that all council members are registered, um, to participate in a. One day virtual training, um, the intro, introduction to systemic racism. Training through crossroads, um, racial justice, training and organizing. This is a training that is targeted toward institutions and organizations for institutional and systemic change. So that's, uh, and that'll be on August fifteenth. Um, and, uh, Jackie and I'm, I'm not sure if we need to do anything about, um. Like, and publicly announcing that participation in a training or. Does it not meet the.
I think the point is that since the whole council will be together.
Yes.
Oh.
We'll be attending a workshop together.
I'll, I'll check and let you all know. When is it?
August fifteenth.
Okay, we've got time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the other thing was just I, after our last meeting, um, and some of the, the. Our conversation and comments we got from constituents, I did some research on kind of what racial equity work. Can look like in municipalities and tried to pull some examples of racial equity work that has been done in, in partnership with. Um, a consultant like, um, the government alliance for racial equity. the government alliance for racial equity. And some examples of RFPs that, that municipalities have put out for different kinds of capacity building and then just, um, also, well, and racial equity work in general, kind of tried to wrap my head around like what are, what is the big picture of the scope of work of going from, uh, capacity building to, um, vision and policy, uh, a policy, like a racial equity policy, kind of like the MRH school board just passed in, uh, I think January or February of twenty twenty, um, to doing a racial equity audit, to creating a racial equity plan. And I was wondering if anybody had any, um, so I sent you all of that and wondering if anybody had any questions or anything you wanted to talk through, just to kind of keep the discussion going.
I will be honest, I didn't have a chance to look at it in depth. So I think maybe if we could read it next time, I think that would be helpful for me.
Okay.
I did, I didn't really get to read it either.
Okay, um, and obviously we'll be reporting on our progress, uh, after the August fifteenth meeting. Any other, any other council communication?
So there was a question that came up in the Q and A, um, specifically regarding the, uh, racial equity council or commission and, um, uh, just a, a question regarding where are we on that? So, um, you know, certainly the work that we're doing as a council is a, is a precursor to that. I'm just wondering if there's been any further movement, um, on where we are.
I mean, so I, I, I feel like there's the, the, um, returning to this discussion like next meeting, um, and especially the meeting after we've done the training, when everybody's had a more of a chance to look at this will be helpful because we can, um, think about, you know, the ways that, um, you know, there, there might be a steering committee in, that involves a diverse group of, um, stakeholders that, like in Gladiator's proposal to us, there was a steering committee. You know, we can think about the ways that different councils function. So is it a narrowly scoped thing to do a narrowly scoped project? Is it a bigger, um, equity council? And then what are the pros and cons of setting up an equity council or commission? Um, and hopefully we can keep talking through that as like part of this bigger conversation.
Yeah. And I felt like what the school board told us in their presentation is that there was a, a bit of legwork we have to do before, like, which you just explained part of, so we can get to the point where we can form some sort of counselor group that will be effective. So I think.
Yeah. Thank you, Sandy.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to at least respond to the, the direct question related to that. So.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. If we're done with council communication, the mayor's report is short. Yeah, I was talking to a constituent who was asking about the, uh, link to our meeting tonight. And I didn't realize it was only posted on Monday and Tuesday that you, you know, so when I, when I went looking for it myself, uh, I, I believe that Laura added a, uh, at least a comment that says, look for the link on Monday or, you know, yeah, starting Monday. So that, uh, if you do a, a search on our website, uh, I couldn't find it. And it was, it was a little bit embarrassing, you know, not to be able to, uh, let people know. A, a lot of people who subscribe to the, uh, the list, they, you know, they get that information automatically. But, uh, we want to make sure that as many people as possible, uh, know how to, uh, watch this exciting program tonight. So that's, that's my report. Is there a city attorney's report?
No, nothing yet this evening, or mayor.
Okay. And, uh, city managers' report?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone signed up for item number eighteen, which is the public forum?
Uh, yes, looks like, uh, Carla DeRousse is wanting to speak. Uh, but we'll go ahead and move her over. Just want to unmute yourself, Carla will be good.
There we go.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Uh, again, I just wanted to, um, say that, uh, regarding boards and commissions, I really, uh, I really hope that these changes include just like really hitting home with advertising open positions as much as possible and as widely as possible. Um, I like that we're taking down some of the barriers like resumes and stuff. Um, and I think that, you know, um, even being a little bit creative and posting, um, signs around like kind of hotspots in Maplewood might not be a bad idea. I, I love the new web, you know, that everything's going on to the website and the advertising could really just point people there. But I think we need to be using social media. Uh, the terms are, I think generally three years for boards and commissions. And sometimes we don't see board openings for months at a time. People are moving in and out of the city. So I just think it's impossible, or it's important to keep things top of mind for people. You know, people get busy with their lives and I think that if they aren't able to do it right now, maybe they won't sign up. But then maybe their life changes in such a way that they're able to participate later. So continuing to kind of, um, you know, put out as widely as possible, those open positions is really going to maybe, uh, provide a better return on interested applicants. And then, uh, my other comment, um, is that I just wanted to reiterate Mary's point from the first public forum about affordable housing. The council, I just feel like the council gave the developer ample opportunity, especially in that last meeting, to, uh, include that. And they've made it clear it's not part of their plan. So I am not in favor of raising that cap at all. I feel that the current twelve million dollar abatement is sufficient. Uh, so thank you guys so much. I appreciate this meeting and, uh, you know, everything you guys do. I look forward to discussing the abatement at the next meeting.
Okay, uh, I think Mr. Scholder is, uh, is next on the list.
Oh, and you're gonna, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, so I think during announcements, uh, I think Karen might have brought up, or maybe Anthony, you brought up that, um, residents from Ward twenty-three and twenty-four in the city will now be allowed at the uh, pool. So I, uh, and I, I mean, I'm wondering the motivation behind that. The Maplewood pool, there's not many people there. I mean, we're, we're choosing not to go because of COVID. Um, we're, we're really, you know, we're pretty cautious on that. Very, very heartbreaking decision for my seven-year-old. It's a great facility. Um, and, and it's, it's hard. It's a hard summer, you know, making that decision. I, I am slightly, so I guess to, to say I'm kind of resident at, at the idea of it being open at all. I think Anthony, you, you said Ellisville announced pretty early back that they decided to shut down their pool in light of COVID for the summer. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned that we're now inviting more people to the pool and just wondering what the motivation, or have we, have we done this every year? Residents of Ward twenty-three and twenty-four.
Mr. Schol, we've actually, uh, this was nothing new. We've actually, prior agreements, we started with, um, Maplewood, Richmond Heights residents only. Then we, um, because of the, uh, park, our relationship with Richmond Heights. And we had a, we have a kind of a parked light agreement with Brentwood. So we brought Brentwood in. Uh, I believe it was July fifth, uh, and, um, and because of that, and then we brought Rock Hill in a few days after that. And, and then we brought in this, the, um, wards, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, and again, and the reason behind Rock Hill prior to the St. Louis city is the St. Louis city did have a pool. Rock Hill did not have an option. So at this point, uh, we won't be allowing any additional people. But what was basically just honoring prior commitments. Um, so that's always been the case.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that, no, I think that's, that's great that we're honoring those prior commitments and that's, you know, people's choice. You know, whether they go to the pool. So I.
We didn't want, and we didn't.
Education on that.
And we didn't want to do it if, for example, we had, uh, too many Maplewood. We wanted to make sure we obviously met the Maplewood, Maplewood and Richmond Heights residents first and we kind of filtered down. But we have been monitoring, um, attendance and, and we're nowhere near capacities. So that's why we did that.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the, appreciate that education.
Okay, uh, Amber, are you, uh, she's, uh, next. Let's, uh, see if she's available.
Amber, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, can I get your, uh, can I get your, um, address, please?
Thirty-three thirty-nine Cambridge Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that I'm grateful to the council, um, for undertaking the racial equity training and capacity building. And I want to commend you, um, for taking the lead on that. I think it's a vital process for the committee to engage in. I wonder if there's an opportunity for that also to be extended to city staff to help build that capacity more broadly across city resources. I also.
We are going to be doing, we are going to be taking that at a later point in time.
Great, great. I wonder as well, after having attended two of the police community meetings, whether that might be recommended to our police force as well. I know that they already engage in a number of trainings. I didn't get the sense from either of those meetings that those trainings specifically are about engaging in anti-racist practices. Um, so I just wanted to put that forth as a recommendation, just based on my personal experience, being in those two meetings and observing the, the discussion in those. That's all I have.
Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
I do not.
Okay.
The else, Mr. Mayor Greenberg.
Okay, I believe that that concludes the public forum for tonight. Number nineteen is a motion to hold a closed session for a real estate matter.
I'll move.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? And make sure Jackie, uh, that's the appropriate procedure.
Yeah, it, it should reflect that it's related to a negotiated contract as well. Yes.
All right, thank you.
And then that means also that this meeting will be over. There will be no coming back to this meeting.
Correct.
That's correct. So.
And, and we'll start the next meeting in about, uh, we'll give everybody about four or five minutes. Is that enough time?
Maybe six minutes.
Make it seven.
Uh, mayor and city council, do you all want Sunin and Sunco to be in that meeting? I don't think it's necessary. I think we, I asked all my questions, but if someone else.
I don't have more questions myself.
No, I don't think so. I think we need to just discuss as a council, get our.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. About, uh, you want to do a motion in a second to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? Okay.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.